Welcome to the Monday, August 9th, 2021 Oxford Public School Committee Meeting. At this point, I'd like to call the meeting to order. Welcome to those watching. At this time, I would like to open the floor to public comment. Comments are limited to topics included on the agenda, so the floor is open for public comment. If anybody would like to step forward or any sort of comment, if you'd like to, please step forward, sit right at the table, just let your name and your address would be great.
Yes, my name's Phil Davis, 7 Forest Street.
Hi, Phil. You'd like to address the board, go ahead?
Yeah, so just curious, looking on the agenda, dealing with the mask issue at school, just kind of looking for a little guidance on where we're going tonight with this, if the decision has already been made. I'm a believer that, you know, I think it should be in the parents' decision to either wear or not wear. You know, I think we're taking the decision-making right out of the hands from the parents with this, and I understand that everybody wants to be safe, but I also believe that, you know, I know my kids personally and other kids, wearing the masks at school is not a fun experience. And I understand that we have to do what we have to do to stay safe, but I also believe that, you know, as being a parent, as everybody else here is, that, you know, it's in your best interest of your child on either to wear or not to wear. So I just wanted to come tonight, and I wasn't sure if this decision has already been made by the board or the school on which way we're going. And I just wanted to make sure, you know, that, you know, I've said it to a lot of people, and, you know, it's how I believe, and I know I speak on behalf of a lot of people, too, that, you know, they pretty much feel the same way that I do, pretty level-headed with everything, and I just think, I think if we just keep on doing this to the kids, we just don't want to go back to that experience that we've had over the course of the last year, year and a half. I mean, that's, it's not fun for anybody, so...
So I could speak real quick, and then I'm gonna turn it over to the superintendent. First of all, I want to thank you, Mr. Davis, for coming forward. It is refreshing and nice to have people come forward, voice opinions. I mean, you, as a parent, as a taxpayer, you're the people we want to hear from. I mean, we all took this job as elected officials to be the voice and of you as parents and residents, so first of all, thank you very much for coming. I can tell you that nothing has been decided. There has been no formal vote by anybody to mandate masks either way, but I will defer to Mr. Lucas to let him give you a little bit of his, where we are in the state of it right currently as we sit.
So superintendents all over the state are waiting for more guidance from the state to see what happens, whether they make a decision. It could come down from the Department of Public Health. We are also superseded when it comes to wearing masks indoors by the local Oxford Public Health Department, so it depends. At this point, as Dave said, we have not made any decisions either way. We're trying to get as much information as we can and waiting further advice from the state. So until that happens, we really won't have an answer.
And the advice from the state, it's a recommendation, correct?
Correct. It's not required. Last year, it was required. Now, it's a recommend, strongly recommended is how they phrased it.
Okay.
Some school districts across the state have decided to take that and make that mandatory mask for all students and staff. Others have not, have decided that it's gonna be optional at this time, and wait and see what happens with the variant and the local number of positive COVID cases. And again, waiting more information. So that's where we are today.
Yeah, I appreciate that. Do you have any other things you want to add? But we certainly, it's, believe me, it's high on our radar, and we're gonna take it. We, you know, being, all of us, three of us work in a building, so we understand exactly how masks and everything that everybody went through last year, so it's something we're gonna take seriously, and we're gonna make the decisions that's in the best interest of the kids, all kids.
Yeah, and I think, you know, that's, and that's a real hard thing from last year, too, where you walk away with last year being done, and, you know, thank God the kids were able to come back to school, but I mean, to have so much stuff just taken away from them, you know, from dances to proms to the stuff, being a kid.
Yep.
And like I said, I understand we have to be safe, but if it is a recommendation, you know, my recommendation would be to leave it within the parents' hands. I understand you guys have a job that you have to do, that's why we voted for you here in town, so...
Well, we appreciate your comments, and we certainly, I know all of us were just taking notes on that, so thank you very much.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So we still are open for public comment. I see that somebody has come in. I don't know if you were interested in public comment, but public comment is still open if you would like to. Comments are limited to what's on our agenda. If you'd like to come forward, please take a seat at the table. Yep, may you just come right forward, just take a seat right at the table. If you could just state your name and your address, that'd be great.
My name is Sarah Baraboe. I live at 232 Main Street. I have an 11-year-old and an eight-year-old that did not attend school last year because I did not believe that the flu shot should be mandated, even though my children are vaccinated. I believe that should be in the governor's hands, and I kept them home because I did not believe they should attend school being masked, not being able to read each other's, read facial features and learn and interact like a normal child. So I was optimistic that my daughter doesn't want to come back, but my son would like to be back in the school system. But again, I will keep him home and homeschool him if he has to be masked. So I'm curious as to how the board is going to determine whether or not masks will be worn and what science they will follow, because the information I'm gathering is that children are not healthy in masks. There's too much carbon dioxide that they're re-inhaling, there's a lot of skin problems, there's lung problems, and then there's the social problems when they can't understand, they can't learn because they can't see lips. And I want to send my son back, but I don't want him going back and being masked. So I'd like to know how this stands, because I think the government guidelines, and I'm not some right-wing conspiracy freak, are both. They're not looking out for the best interests of the children, and I feel as a parent, I have to do that.
Correct. So first of all, I, as I just told the last speaker, we want to thank you very much for coming forward. This is the way to do it, this is the forum to come to, this is where we want to hear the opinions of parents and taxpayers and people of Oxford. So first of all, thank you very much for coming in. We did just kind of touch upon that, but we certainly have no problem kind of repeating what we, what we just discussed. As of right now, there has been no vote taken to wear masks in school. There's been a recommendation put out by Desi that's strongly recommending a K to six and then a seven to 12. That's where we are right now in the Oxford Public Schools, we are just with that. I will defer to the superintendent, he can talk a little bit about what he just talked about, but I'm just trying to look up what the new title is. Our pre-K to 12 health and wellness coordinator, Mrs. Grenette, is actually at Town Hall right now, talking with the Board of Health. She is on our agenda to come back and give us some feedback as to kind of that meeting and some other, you know, information that's gonna help educate our board. But no decision will be made tonight, no decision has been made, and I will certainly defer to the superintendent, see if Mr. Lucas has anything he wants to add.
So when will a decision be made? Because, like I said, I'd like to re-enroll my child, I'd like him to participate, and I'm not worried about socialization, I'm not worried about this, I'm not worried about that, but I'm perfectly capable of teaching my, especially a third grader.
Yeah.
But this is...
Yeah, I mean, I could say, you know, respectfully, the re-enrollment process is pretty fluid if he's already been a student in the district.
Oh, it's very fluid, I just have to say he's coming back, he's coming back.
Exactly, right. So as of right now, I mean, we are going by the recommendation of Desi, so I mean, if you want to re-enroll him today, you re-enroll him tomorrow, you re-enroll your child.
So I'm curious, though, you say we're going by the recommendations, but like, what is Desi basing the recommendations on? Because when I go to the CDC website, they tell me, it says the Delta variant is inconsequential, right on the CDC website.
I mean, I, we certainly could, I can't, I don't want to get into the CDC versus the state. All I can tell you is what we're going off of what Desi has strongly recommended. Now, we need to continue to get some information from the Board of Health in town and our pre-K to 12 health and wellness coordinator.
And how are they, and I don't mean to be rude, but how are they gathering their information?
Certainly ask Mrs. Grenette when she comes in, and she can, she can tell us more.
Is she, is she coming back tonight?
She had a meeting at 5:00, and the plan is to get her back here right after, yeah, so...
Okay, because I'm only allowed to speak for so long, right?
Right, right. Public comment, we'll close at some point, but you, we certainly have heard, if there's anything else you want to add to what you have said, we're certainly making note of that, and then we hope that you would stick around in the audience and hear what the rest of it is.
It's pretty clear, I always have something to add.
You know, you certainly can send us emails after the meeting, and, you know, if there's other things that...
Well, I've already emailed the new superintendent last week.
Excellent, alright.
So, because I would like to re-enroll him, and I'm really excited about the things that are happening in Barton right now, but, you know, it's, the masks are, it's, there was no study showing the masks are effective. You know, if the masks were effective, the numbers would be way down, right?
Well, again, I don't want to get into the debates of what's effective, what's not. We understand your opinion, we, you want us to have a decision soon, that is our goal, is to have a decision. What I can tell you, as we sit here today on Monday, August 9th, there is no mask requirement in the Oxford Public Schools. We are going by Desi's guidelines. That's where we are today. As we have all known since March 13th of 2020, this ever-changing pandemic has had turns, you know, so many times. As a principal of a building myself, I mean, we had to adjust, you know, thousands of times over the course of this year and a half. I'm not saying that's what we want to do, but I think we have to be able to be flexible and be able to maneuver if and when we need to. But as of right now, there is no mask mandate in Oxford, and that's kind of where we're at.
Okay.
Alright.
I appreciate being able to be heard.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you. So public comment, the floor is still open for public comment. I did see somebody else arrive, I'm not sure, ma'am, if you were interested in public comment?
I have to find my pocket anywhere.
Is there anybody else who would like to come forward for public comment?
Do you have your opinion?
I have, I have everything ready.
Go ahead, go say your opinion.
Don't be shy, if there's something that you want to say, it's really important that we hear your opinion, so...
I don't, nothing today.
Okay.
Alright, so I don't see any more public comment. At this time, I'm gonna close the meeting to public comment. I do want to thank both parents who spoke, we really, really appreciate you coming today, so thank you. We do have some minutes, our meeting minutes of July 26th, 2021, that we do need to approve. So if we have no objection to anything in the minutes, we do need a motion and a vote.
I'll make the motion to accept the minutes of the 26th.
We have a motion, is there a second?
I'll second the motion.
And we have a second, any discussion? Seeing and hearing on call for the vote, Ms. Cook?
Yes.
Mrs. Forbes?
Yes.
Mrs. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Minutes are approved. We also have a field trip request for August 25th, 2021, for the NJROTC in Newport, Rhode Island trip. I would assume that we've all had a chance to take a look at that. If there are any questions, we'll probably have to drive them through the superintendent. If not, we do need a motion to approve there, and I do see a hand, Mrs. Griffin.
So, I know normally that we see like an approval by the principal and school nurse, and I don't know if this has been reviewed by the school nurse or not, and typically, correct me if I'm wrong, we haven't done one of these field trips in forever, but if I remember correctly, there was usually a school nurse that was present. I can't recall, like, it's been so long.
If I could just speak to that, David.
Yes, please do.
There is another form, you're absolutely right, Mrs. Griffin, that does have the nurse's signature, because it asks, will a nurse be present?
Oh, yeah, that's right.
And then, does the nurse approve? So this is a different form, I think maybe this is the older version of the field trip request.
Yeah, because we just had a special form, I believe, as part of the college...
Wait a minute. Yeah, this says 2019.
Miss Cook just realized this is 2019 that we would be approving, so we need to, this is the primary date, would be the 25th of 2019.
And there's another date on the other side that says May 7th, 2021.
Yeah, alright, so...
It's probably different, so I don't know.
Alright, so this trip is on the 25th, we have a meeting on the 23rd, that is too short of a window to approve. Helen, would you agree?
Yeah. I, I mean, I can speak for myself, I'm comfortable approving this trip if I know that it has the approval of the principal, even though I don't see it on this paperwork right now, and it has the approval of a school nurse, and they're aware of this trip.
And I'm with Mrs. Griffin, too.
But it just, nothing tells me about it.
We can, we can do that, right? So somebody makes a motion to approve the trip with, and just put that language in, I don't know if you can capture it, September or...
Sure. I'll make a motion to accept the NJROTC field trip request pending the approval of Mr. Nugent and Mrs. Grenette.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor, and there's a second, and there's a second. We had some discussion, is there any further discussion? Seeing and hearing on call for the vote, Ms. Cook?
Yes.
Mrs. Forbes?
Yes.
Mrs. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
And I'm a yes, five in the affirmative. So we'll probably take this a little bit out of order, seeing Mrs. Grenette is not here, so why don't we go to the second item, the business office, or Mr. Ledoux, if you don't mind coming forward.
Okay. Thank you very much. Reason I'm before you this evening is to go over wrapping up the fiscal '21 budget. The way I like to look at it is, I'm always working in three years, I'm closing the prior fiscal year, working in the current year, and getting ready for the upcoming year. So this is just wrapping up fiscal '21. Back when we set the fiscal '21 budget was towards the beginning of March of 2020, and I mean, we certainly didn't know what the future held. Due to the restrictions that we had by COVID, many of the services we normally provide were certainly limited due to the COVID restrictions, so therefore, like I've been kind of saying for the past year, is we would have a healthy surplus of leftover monies just due to the services not happening. Back in May, towards the end of May, I think I came before you, Dr. Nash and myself, and we spent close to, close to a million dollars on just reallocating things that we saw as budget surplus. We purchased the English curriculum, certain technologies, we put some money into food service, as we know, we have some upcoming challenges in that area. But I want to come back to the committee with the use of the rest of the budget money as we got to the end of the year, because at that point in time, I didn't know for certain. I think I had estimated between 200,000 to 300,000 would be left over. So I'm just gonna quickly go through just the revolving account balances. We did come to the committee and say we'd go on revolving, but we just didn't identify them at the time. And just to kind of let everybody know, these amounts that are in these revolving accounts, these were what was originally charged to revolving accounts. These revolving accounts were used to actually balance our budget last year. If you remember, we had a significant decrease in our funding prior to the school year starting. I think we had an increase of just about $100,000, and that certainly would not, any school district, not, unless you're extremely small, would not certainly balance your budget. So what we did is we, with the fiscal '20 funds, we prepaid some sped expenditures, and also used the revolving funds to balance the budget, just so you all know, kind of have a big picture as to what was going on. So these final moves here to kind of replenish those accounts, put the money back, you know, and if you need it going forward, you have that to kind of fall back on. So those amounts for the school choice revolving fund, we put 41,000 into that account, the preschool revolving, that's 53,000, the ACE revolving, 214,000, school lunch, we put another just shy of 40,000 in that revolving fund, and the athletic revolving, just under Again, I just wanted to update the committee with those, and if you have hard times in the future, those are always nice to fall back on, or if there's a certain program you want to roll out, you always have these kind of in your back pocket to utilize. The big one that was surprising, as we, to me, is the SPED IDA grant. So let me just give you a little bit of background on that. When you receive SPED IDA money, that's a federal grant to help support your SPED programs, to stop supplanting, because when we talk about grants, we always talk about supplant versus supplement, and these grants are supposed to supplement your programs, not supplant, meaning they're not supposed to take the place of your programs and just completely fund them. So to stop that, what they do is they have something called maintenance of effort. And what that means is from year to year to year, and local funding, it has to be at least the same, equal to or greater from year to year to year for your SPED programs, coming from local sources. So that means we have to use our local monies to pay for SPED programs, we can't just take grant money to fund the SPED programs and save our local monies, if that makes any sense. So one of the things that kind of came out of COVID was, like, when I talked about the reduced services, was meeting maintenance of effort. So one thing I did look at was, well, geez, are we gonna even be close this year? Namely, what had happened is we were closing out purchase orders, and we had close to almost $230,000 left over in just sped transportation. Now, thinking back to prior years, I said, well, geez, you know, that definitely contributes to maintenance of effort, so if we did not spend that, that's gonna be a problem. So what happens when you don't meet your maintenance of effort, one of two things, either you pay out of local funds the difference that you didn't, that you didn't meet it by, in our case, would be about 290,000, or you pay back the grant money, which is just shy of 500,000. So either way, it's not a good scenario if you do not meet maintenance of effort. I did reach out to the, one of the state auditors who handles this, to see what our options were, so we just simply give back the grant money, what do we do? And she said, no, most certainly, we would pay this back through local funds sometime next April. So I said, well, geez, what else can we do to resolve this? And one thing I'll just kind of touch upon is to come up with exemptions, and exemptions are, well, did we have a student have a change in IEP where the placement was different, and there was a huge drastic change in the amount of money that we're spending? So that's one method we could come up with, was to come up with these exemptions. However, COVID is not recognized as an exemption. We can't just say, oh, there was a pandemic, so therefore, we couldn't provide the services. Now, Desi has been very clear that the feds are not allowing that. We can't say, well, geez, we didn't provide SPED transportation due to COVID, and, you know, so we didn't meet it. That's not going to fly. So we have pretty much two options, either come up with exemptions or find another way. And I think it's safe for me to say, pretty much every school district is gonna be facing this, that, you know, they're gonna have challenges, that they didn't meet their maintenance of effort if they received federal funding for their, for their SPED grants. And there's gonna be a problem across the Commonwealth, I mean, the whole Commonwealth was, school was closed, and then come back and some, was not 100%, I'll put it that way, and it did differ from school to school, but this is gonna create a problem for everybody looking at this. So it's kind of, pick your poison, what, how do you want to fix this? And the Associate Commissioner for School Finance, Mr. Jay Sullivan, I listened to him speak about this, because a lot of business officials did, did contact him and say, geez, what are we supposed to do? And I can't say, he was very clear, Desi did reach out to the feds and ask for forgiveness, and the feds said, no, we're not budgeting, sorry. So Desi has come up with other unique ways to fix, to address this. And one recommendation he has made was to simply take the expenditures you charge to your SPED grant throughout the year and charge those to your general fund. So what this does is it boosts up the amount you've spent out of your local funds, and really, you haven't touched your SPED grant. So in Oxford's situation, that's what we did. We, I moved the expenditures out of the grant to our general fund to use up that, you know, just shy of 300,000 to meet our maintenance of effort, but that would result in the fiscal '21 SPED grant being carried forward. So part of the tidings amendment means that we get 27 months to spend this money, so we have till roughly next August, August or September of 2022, to spend this, this SPED money. And again, it's just shy of 500,000. So I guess that could be viewed as a good thing, but when you think long-term, you have to be very careful, you don't want to be too, too heavy on using the federal funding, because again, you'll be in the same predicament, that if you charge a million dollars to these SPED grants locally, you're not meeting your maintenance of effort. So that could become a problem, so we are gonna get together and have some meetings of how we want to address this going forward to handle it. So I mean, I guess in my opinion, what I'm really doing is just kicking the can down the road, avoiding having to pay back any money and just simply buying us some time to see how we're gonna deal with this. And you never know, you could certainly get a kiddo move in, and, you know, it could blow your budget right out of the water, seemingly resolving the problem, but that's not for today. But I thought that this would be a good opportunity to at least bring this forward as part of, you know, reclassifying these revolving funds, because this kind of fits right into that, it's just, it's not a revolving fund, it's a grant that this happened to. I do want to make the committee aware that this could result in an audit finding, the reason being, it violates cash management rules for federal grants. What that means is, as we spend down this grant money, I have to reach out to Desi and the grants administrators and request the money to be replenished on a monthly basis. So of course, I did that. At the time, I'm thinking we're spending the money and, you know, didn't acknowledge that there's a problem going on. So this money is now in our bank account, well, it wasn't our bank, we're paying the bills for it with it, but then if you think about it this way, that no longer exists, all that money was moved to general fund that was already there. So now we have this grant money sitting in a, in a bank account, collecting interest, and that's kind of a no-no when it comes to grant management, and that, that's why I was saying it's a, it's a cash management, could be a cash management finding. But again, like I had said earlier, it's kind of pick your poison, do we want to pay back $300,000 next year of local funds, or do we want to take an audit finding? So that's just kind of where I'm at with it, I just, I wanted to bring this to the committee's attention, because again, it kind of fit right in with year-end wrapping up and what I'm seeing as we're going, as we're closing the fiscal year.
Alright, Mr. Ledoux, if you could just pause right there, I'm sure there might be a few questions, Mr. Burke, do you have your hand?
Yeah, I did. Justin, thank you. I just wanted to point out for the board, too, the conversation that you and I had just prior to the meeting, that you have also reached out to other districts, other business managers, to find out what other folks are doing, I think that's a smart move and...
Correct, I did reach out to, I did hear back from one, who said that they experienced this last year with 2020, because naturally, the schools got closed, and then they're, they're also facing again this year, and their recommendation to me was to take the audit finding, and again, it's nothing I, it doesn't sit well with me either way, there's no good answer, but that, that's what has been recommended to me, was to do that. So I mean, I kind of take that, what other schools, districts have experienced, plus with what the Associate Commissioner of Finance is recommending, so that's just kind of where we're at.
What is the consequence of an audit finding?
If you get too many, the percentage as to what they test goes up. So I believe right now it's under 10% or 20%, because we've been pretty good the past few years, in fact, we've done really well as far as the audits are concerned. What happens when you start to get a lot of audit findings, they just test more, now the auditors are gonna start really digging through things, which, they're like a dog looking for bone, they're just, they'll start going through everything, which could result in more in problems. I feel as though we're in very good shape, but we haven't, we've had very minor audit findings over the past few years, that, I mean, if that's, again, pick your poison if that's what it is, and it's not neglect or, this isn't an intentional thing that's being done. And again, that's if they, if they test that, they focus on different grants, and the hot item right now is the ESR monies, all the ARP, that's what the auditors are really looking through right now, so ESR funds, all you that work in school districts, giving you a heads up, they're all looking at your ESR funds with a magnifying glass.
Any other questions, Mrs. Forbes?
I just have a clarification, please. This says 295, I know you were saying 300, but at some point, you said 500,000, was that misspeaking, or is that a number I'm missing here?
So the amount of money that we get in the fiscal '21 SPED IDA grant was actually for 480,000.
Okay.
So excuse me, I said 500,000.
No, no, I just wanted to be sure that...
So I was doing the comparison as to what our options are, and it's, you pay the lesser amount, so we would either pay the 300,000 that we're short meeting maintenance of effort or pay back the SPED grant monies, it's whatever the lesser amount is. So in this case, it would be the amount that we were short on the maintenance of effort.
Thank you. Alright.
Mrs. Griffin?
So, I know I came to you with concerns, too, I think we, individually, I'm hearing everybody kind of knocked on your door and bugged you, and I just kind of, moving forward, want to hear a plan that we have in place for potentially avoiding this type of a situation again. If COVID is, you know, what kind of throws a wrench in our plans continuously, and it seems like it happened to other districts, how did other districts manage to not have that wrench again? It sounds like the one district you talked to, they found themselves in the same boat again, but I would think that there's got to be a solution where we don't find ourselves in the same predicament again, and I would love to hear at the next meeting what the solutions are so these things don't happen again.[1779.04] But I would think that there's got to be a solution where we don't find ourselves in the same predicament again. And I would love to hear at the next meeting what the solutions are, so these things don't happen again. That's kind of, that's the task I'm giving you. Like, what could we do in a perfect world, even with COVID being a factor, that we could prevent this from happening? Because it sounds like in April, we're probably gonna need to pay back money. Unless, I don't know, it still sounds like we're gonna have to pay back money, even though we've moved things. Unless somebody says, no, because we have some exemptions, but we don't know of any exemptions at this moment. Correct, or am I?
We know of a few exemptions. I've been in regular contact with the state auditor who handles this.
No, but I mean that we have, not that like of hearing that they exist.
Oh, no, 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 so we do have some. We do have some. Oh, we have a Plan B, just in case. This should resolve it by making this journal entry. But we also do have exemptions, because you have to understand what happened is it wasn't just purely COVID and shutting down, it was a combination of things. I think I had to put that in the memo, that it wasn't purely that. It's, that was the big piece of it, and unfortunately, we couldn't use that as an exemption. But we do have the other minor ones, such as just changes in staff and out of district placements, really. But I can certainly come back to you with a plan after we have some conversations of how we want to address this.
Okay, because I was just, you know, I know some unforeseen things, like if a staff member leaves, or something happens and they can't return to work, that's one thing that you shared, then that kind of sets off our balance. If that did happen, and we couldn't fill a position, I guess I would like to hear what would be the recommendation we would immediately be doing with the money? Like, so we have a Plan B, in case, in case we try to fill a position, we can't fill it. In case somebody does leave because they choose to not come back to work, because it's a risk for their family, or they're tending to a sick, you know, individual, or they get sick, God forbid. I'd like to know, like, okay, we have this, this plan for how the school committee is then gonna spend funds, so we don't find out after the fact that we didn't spend funds the right way. I know we didn't purposely do this, but I'm just saying, if that makes sense, yeah, so.
Just before you go on, I do want to, I do want to echo Pal. I mean, I think, we certainly don't want to point fingers or blame. I mean, things happen. I think self-reflection and a plan moving forward is huge. I guess my question is, who is responsible for the IDA grant? Who writes it, who oversees it?
Our sped director submits the grant and oversees the grant portion of it. I oversee the finance portion of it. So when it comes to what we're spending and getting the cash from, you know, cash requests, that's my role. Overseeing it is her. I hope that answers your question.
Oh, you answered it perfectly, thank you. Appreciate it. You have more for us?
So just finally, as part of your packet, I did give you kind of the, well, it is the final budget to actual for fiscal '21. So I just kind of want to update the committee that we ended the year with roughly $15,000 left. So this 15 grand will go back to the town, as it was unspent. All the other monies have been, they're put in the revolving funds, or like I said, the big one was that IDA grant issue that kind of came at the last minute. And if anyone has any questions, I mean, I'm happy to answer, or after the fact, if you have an email or something. You want to email me if you think of something after the fact.
Any questions from the board currently?
Not so much a question, just a statement. I guess more of a request, just kind of seeing what, how we're planning to use the funds for our IDA grant, and a plan for our funds for the general education of our students moving forward. So if we have, you know, if we have a good problem, which it sounds like, where we have some money to spend, so we're, you know, like you said, this is not bad news necessarily. It's good news in the sense that we have money, and we just have to be thoughtful about how we're spending that money. So we heard that from you, loud and clear. So I guess the task moving forward is, now that we know we're charged with, you know, using those funds in the best way, what's the plan to make sure that all kids get the best possible education? And we know that there's social, emotional needs, and mental health, and we heard about students transitioning at the beginning of this meeting back into school. There's so many things that could help our students on the horizon. And I know we have a phenomenal superintendent, who has done amazing stuff in Tascowad that I witnessed when I went out there to see him. I'm sure he has some wonderful thoughts that he can bring to us maybe at a future meeting.
To kind of add to that, again, the idea is to supplement the programs, not some plans, so.
Right, supplement, and that's what I'm saying. We need to big-time supplement to get kids back into school, to secure their mental health, to make sure that, God forbid, Mrs. Grenet could probably speak to this, if they're out sick with COVID and they're trying to transition back to school. We're hearing about students that have long-term COVID now. I mean, I don't know about it very much, but that might be hard for those kids to get back in the classroom. What would we do to make sure that they have the best education? That's all.
So I think you wouldn't, just to kind of capture it, so that we're all the same, you're looking kind of for a plan on how they're gonna spend the IDA money this fiscal year.
And what we're gonna do for those regular ed students.
Right, just caution, though, there is gonna be a transition in position, right? There's gonna be a transition in staffing, so hopefully Dr. Sue will have a template in place, and I'm sure Mr. Lucas will work with her, and then maybe the new person coming in has a, you know, different vision or something to get out to, so, okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Ledoux.
Thank you.
We'll go back to the first item under this, we'll go to Mrs. Grenet, that she now has arrived. So welcome, Mrs. Grenet, come right up. Before you do speak, though, I do want to let you know, we did have some public comment tonight. We had two parents speak regarding masks, so we did have some public comment. We talked to them about the fact that currently, we are still just going by DESI recommendations, of strongly recommending the K to 6, the 7 to 12, that's what we're going by. They were asking when we're gonna vote on masks. We said, no votes are being taken tonight, that you were at a meeting, we're gonna hear a little bit from you, and you know, there'll be more information down the line. So I'll turn it right over to you.
Okay, so, thank you. I am coming right from the Board of Health meeting, so I guess we'll just kind of go right into the masks. So obviously, we'd all like a little bit more guidance from either the state, either tell us what to do, or the local Board of Health. There's a couple different doors we have to kind of go through before we're the ones to make that decision. I have, in the town, seen an uptick. Obviously, it's been across the state and the country, so we're just following that, and hoping that between, you know, more people being vaccinated and, you know, right now, we're just kind of following the numbers, but we don't have the luxury of time as much. So within the next couple of weeks, we should, you know, be making a decision on that.
Could I just ask you to clarify something? You said that, did the public health say it's up to us? Is that what?
No, no, so what I'm saying is, if this, you know, DPH, DESI, if the state says we have to mandate, we have to mandate. If it doesn't, the local Board of Health has the authority to mandate. And if that doesn't, then we, you kind of create that policy.
I guess what some of the people here present probably publicly want to know, where is our town health department with that? Did they mention anything? What are they saying? What is their comment?
So basically, there wasn't, you know, there was discussion, but there isn't a one-way or the other there. You know, that's something that we can weigh in with them when it's time to make that decision. Right now, you know, a handful of districts are saying, yeah, we're fully masked, and others are just following the guidance of strongly recommend, you know, in.
Any questions? Go ahead, Mr. Burke.
Hi. A couple of questions for you, Amy. Does the town Board of Health have a timeline at all? I know that people that talked tonight are concerned and want to know when. They want to know, and I'm sure they want an opportunity to voice their opinion to the Board of Health. Do they know about next meetings or anything like that?
So the next, I don't have, I left before the end of the meeting, so I'm not sure when their next one is, but I can certainly send that to the board tonight, because I'm sure I'll be getting that email.
Should be on the town website.
Yes, yeah, yeah. So, no, there wasn't, there wasn't a timeline with the Board of Health. You know, we kind of work in conjunction, we work together with them. So I don't, unless we make a decision that they just really don't agree with. But it would be nice if we can collaborate with them before there's a decision made, so it's not a waste of time, or, you know, so. But there are a couple, it's the state, it's DESI, it's the local Board of Health, and then us.
Yeah, I think you may have alluded to it earlier, I think we're all just kind of holding our breath waiting for the state to just come out and tell us what we need to do anyway, as much as we'd like to make the decision ourselves.
Exactly.
There was a question earlier, and I don't know if you can speak to this or not, so if you can't, that's absolutely fine.
I'll try.
About the data, the data that's being looked at. And I think we all know, you turn on one station, they're saying this, you turn on another station, they're saying this. I can pull up a report on both sides of the line. What is the data we're looking at, and we're talking about, or, and again, if this is, if you're not prepared to speak to that, I'm.
Yeah, I mean, I think we're all looking at the same data, and really, I can just tell you anecdotally from what I've been seeing, you know, that's in addition to what we all know, what we've all seen on the news. But you turn on one station and you see one thing, is, there is an uptick. There absolutely is. There's breakthrough in fully vaccinated. So, you know, not as much, and they're not as severe cases, but they're still there. And, you know, as far as vaccination, I think right now with our numbers, you know, we have 12 to 15-year-olds, we're about 30% fully vaccinated. 16 to 19-year-olds, we're about almost 50% vaccinated. And really, those are the only age groups we.
The whole town?
The whole town, about 60%. Yep, our elders are doing really well with it, in the 90s, so. They're high-risk, so, and you have the whole, you know, once it becomes FDA-approved, that's when you see a lot more numbers, so.
Anything else, Mr. Burke?
Yeah, I think, just to kind of go along with that question earlier, I think there are conflicting reports about the effectiveness of the vaccine. There are conflicting reports about the effectiveness of masks, and all. And a lot of people looking to see that left in the hand of parents, as opposed to whatever the government. So I think I want to stress that people need to speak their mind, they need to speak to the Board of Health. They need to, like, tonight, come and speak to this board, so that everybody can make an informed decision. And I guess, I don't know if this is for Mr. Lucas or for you, but is there a plan? And how are we going about, as a board, communicating with the Board of Health, just through you?
It's through me, Kathy Schomer attends the meetings as well, she wasn't there tonight, she's on vacation. But we, we have to work together with them, obviously, but the thing is, on the Board of Health, you have nurses that are frontline nurses, so they see it firsthand. Here in the schools, we know that, you know, the younger you are, the less, you know, high-risk. But it's who they're going home to, and, you know, there's so many things, you know, and like you said, one day it's like, okay, let's just make our own decisions here, we're all adults. And then, then there's the days where we're like, okay, we need to try to kind of slow this down a little bit. Right now, our numbers are significantly higher than last summer. Last summer, Kathy did a graph, last summer, this same week, we had two active cases. Right now, we have 20. So, you know.
Is that because we're tracking data better? Like, do we have more data readily available compared to where we were last summer? Because we have access to more testing? Because like, I'm trying to think how we have more this year versus last year? Because last year, it felt like we didn't have that up and running to know that data.
Well, so we, Kathy and I collect data directly from the state report that we get. You know, every morning, I check the report, they have new cases, and then, you know, we put that into our data. So there's no, there's no other way we're getting that besides what the state gives, the town, you know, for the town.
So that's consistent?
That's consistent, and that's since last April, since that was up and running.
So with that information that you presented last year, I know we felt very, we received a lot of information from, obviously, you know, the Department of Education and other resources, saying that we had to have a hybrid model. We had to actually, at this point of the year, correct me if I'm wrong, we had to have three proposed models, like, what are we gonna do? So we know, because we've done it in the past, how are we gonna do it? If, God forbid, we had to press play again, are we prepared to shuffle the deck and put space between desks again? How much effort would that be on our part if we needed to? Because I'm assuming our classrooms are kind of set up towards that, more the end of the year, when things were good, and if we want to get kids fully back and not be remote, what would that take now to be prepared for that, if we had to go that way?
It would take a few, at least a few days. We have the, we are setting up the buildings for similar schooling to what was in June. The cafeterias, for the most part, have been put back to their normal pre-COVID state, and that was our plan going forward. That last announcement from the state that I shared with you guys did say, all kids would be in school five days a week, so that that is not gonna change. The question really is not going back to hybrid learning or remote learning. The state realizes the value of having kids in the building is to whether or not they're gonna wear masks, which they just strongly encourage, did not mandate at this time. But I think those of us in the superintendent circles in educational field feel like at some point, the state may say, we're gonna open schools as normal, but everybody's wearing a mask. That probably could happen, but we'll have to wait and see if that happens. Or the Department of Public Health could do it.
Right, I think we'd see it from the state before anywhere.
Yeah.
That's just my question.
Mr. Burke, you had asked a question, and then it was, it's okay, we had follow-up, but do you have any other questions?
Appreciate it, thank you.
Any other questions down this end of the table? Mrs. Forbes?
I just want to speak to what one of the parents had said, since you weren't here earlier. And one of her concerns is that she has read information that wearing the mask is not healthy for children, because of the carbon dioxide that's being inhaled for long periods of time. And she stated a couple of other situations that made it unhealthy for children. Has the Board of Health, or have you and Mrs. Schomer discussed that at all?
So we've discussed, it's mostly in certain weather. I think that, you know, when they started saying, take the masks off outside when you're, you know, running around outside in the heat, I think it's a, I think it's a good idea to take the mask off. But we really have to consider that age group, and like we said, that age group, you don't see high numbers in those young, you know, children. So in as far as sitting in a desk, at a desk, I don't know that it's unhealthy. I haven't seen any, you know, data, like any hard research on that. But, you know, it's, think about how no one has been sick at all, and you think, well, that's great. No one's been sick with anything, because there's more things than COVID. But what can that mean when, you know, the masks come off? So I am, I understand fully both sides, and daily, I am on one side or the other, so I can, I can understand it. I have the luxury of knowing the numbers, you know, that are in town, and it does make me a little nervous. But then again, it is the attitude, the, I guess, the atmosphere in the schools at the end of the school year, and it's not just because it was the end of the school year and everybody was just excited, it was, people had the masks off outside, and, you know, it was just kind of starting to feel normal, so. It's gonna be a, hopefully, it's not a decision that we have to make, let's just say that.
Anything else down this end?
Yep. Remembered my other question there, was in those conversations, has there been a discussion about the mental health piece, or is it just the physical health piece?
So the mental health piece around the mask, or just around COVID? No, there has, I have not seen a whole lot about mental health and the mask, but mental health in COVID itself, yes, lots, lots, lots of information. That's a big thing that I'm trying to kind of take on right now in this new position. It's a big one.
Yeah.
One thing that came to mind is PPE. Like, how are we doing? Do we, you know, God forbid, we hear from the state, it's out of our control. And the only way you can have your school open is to have masks. Do we have that available right now? Or do we have to order that?
So, we have, we had received, besides what we, what we purchased.
Right.
Just, we have businesses that donated a lot of masks. Really, the only thing we fell a little short on towards the end of the school year was pediatric masks. But we have a very good bulk right now of, of regular adult masks. We just purchased pediatric masks in the event, you know, in, in really, you didn't, we didn't go through a whole lot of masks because students wore their own. So, you know, if they came in and didn't have it, they, they were hot or whatever, if they broke, you know.
Couple of quick things. You know, when it comes to data, you can look at data a lot of different ways, right? When you peel through the data. So, you compare last summer to this summer, 2 to 20. Well, last summer, everyone had masks on. This summer, they don't. So, obviously, there's going to be an uptick there. So, I just want to be really cautious when we put numbers out there because, you know, there is, there is a difference. The second thing, and I'm not being critical of anybody, you know, we all went through this, that in March of 2020, you've heard me say this earlier. I just hope that we reflect. So, when we make a decision, if we make a decision, if the state does not make a decision to mandate masks and it goes to the board of health, I'm asking through the superintendent that we are part of a decision.
Absolutely.
We are elected officials to represent the parents, to represent the community. And I feel like there was some decisions made last year that we didn't have a say in. And I think we, as a board, should have a say because we represent the two or three parents who came in here today and the 465 that are on Facebook today all over. So, I just, I would really ask that we have a say with the board of health. So, if we have to attend a meeting or if we have to, I just want to be part of that decision.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's a, a non-invite meeting. You just, you go. You know, as you're members of the community, you're, you know, elected. So, absolutely.
But I'm saying, if the board of health is going to take a vote or if they're going to recommend that we, they're saying across the, across this town, it's mandated you wear masks in public buildings. If they're leaning that direction, I really hope that we can have a say in that, seeing that we have, you know, multiple buildings in this town. And we represent a large percentage of, you know, the taxpayers in this town, you know, through their children. So, I'm just hoping that we can be part of the conversation. I'm not saying we have to be the ultimate decider unless they defer to us.
Right.
But ultimately, I would like to be part of that conversation as a board if it gets to that point. That's, I just want to make that public.
Yeah, I, I think that's very important, that every department works together. Absolutely.
Anything else from anybody here? Anything else that you had tonight, Mrs. Grenet?
So, just a couple of things. We did send out a survey to the families, just asking, is there anybody out there that is not vaccinated that wants to be vaccinated? And the idea was that we'd hold a vaccination clinic. MasDPH is offering a mobile vaccination, kind of, they'll come in and, and staff it. And we may have to provide transportation. But it's any student or staff and house, eligible household family member if they're, if they want that and they are not able to get it or access it, they will be able to do that. So, we're still having some information trickle in. That was Tower Trainer had sent that out. And last I heard, there was, you know, maybe under 10 people that, that wanted it, which, and we agreed, even if the number was two, if they want it and we can, you know, help them gain access, then, then why not? And it's obviously, just also getting back, I guess, this, I'll piggyback off of this. When we're talking about masks and who's going to wear the masks and if it is a decision, I do feel that saying any vaccinated person does not have to wear a mask. I don't know how well that looks. And I don't, I'm really not in the business of shaming anybody or pointing any fingers at anybody. So, you know, having said that, I just feel like it's, it's a decision that you don't, high school's hard enough, you know? Do we really want to be saying, oh, she must be, he must not be, you know? So, you know, but that's that. And, and I think we're going to get more guidance anyway. And I know that we're going to, Desi's going to send out another protocols, you know, same thing as we got last year. That was scenarios and protocols that was so ultra-specific that we kind of had to follow to a T. And a lot of times, families didn't understand that. We were following something to, to the T because that's, that was what we had to do. We may have a little bit more discretion this year, which would be nice. But, you know, on the other hand, it might not be. And we have lots of people, and I've gotten emails as well, you know, we shouldn't wear masks. And I've gotten ones that are, and I'm sure Mr. Lucas has gotten them as well, pretty much, we won't, you need to, you know, make the decision to wear masks. So, we have people on both sides. And it's so hard to please everyone. You just can never do that.
Could you just, I, I know the survey for those who might want to be vaccinated was sent through an email, correct, to all
Yeah.
school-aged children? Is there a place on the website where they might be able to access it just in case somebody didn't see it or have access to it? Or just refer them to the email?
Yeah, we were going to actually send out another one this week. So, we should send another one out and then maybe, maybe also post it on the website.
Yeah, that's, we could do that.
Yeah, yeah.
Just to get it, you know, early August, people probably won't look at an email as much.
Right. And then they get email fatigue because there'll be a lot of stuff coming through.
All right. Anything else, Mrs. Grenet? Oh, I apologize. Question down there.
Just came to my mind as you were talking and saying, you know, we didn't get to make decisions last year and everything was kind of mandated on us. And one thing that I'm thinking with my policy hat was that we had all those policies that had to be in place because they were mandated for us by the state. Now, I don't know if there was a sunset clause on those policies. I feel like there might have been, but I can't really recall. So, those policies may still be in place. And therefore, they may be questioned if we're not following them. So, I guess we would need to get some guidance from Desi, not from Desi, from MASC.
Right.
Do we need to make a motion to rescind and get rid of all those policies and put different ones in place? And if so, is there any guidance right now from MASC? What should be there?
Yeah, we'll have to go back and look at that because you're right. They physically do go into the policy manual.
But it was its own separate.
It's all separate. So, we'd have to go back.
And it basically gave the discretion of the superintendent.
Right. So, maybe we can ask Helen.
To do what you had to do in the circumstances because it was changing every day. So, it was kind of like.
Your question, your, your, and it's a great point, seeing what the timeline is on it, correct?
Right.
So, maybe if Helen could maybe dig that up for us and she can get back to us.
And I think it basically put in charge, like, everything that was mandated on the state therefore had to happen through the discretion of the superintendent.
Right.
Not us as a board saying this policy was in place. And it was special language that basically said that because it was mandated on all of us.
Yeah, I remember that. There's a bunch. Yep. Good point.
To, to speak to that. So, June 19th, the Department of Elementary, they said that it's all been lifted. So, all health and safety guidance, including masking, is lifted for the fall. So, do you mean?
Yeah, I don't know if that policy though was
Right.
Even though it said it was lifted, if it really was not there anymore?
That could be a
It could have been it. It could have been.
Well, no, that's, that's lifting what we
Right. It was kind of like a blanket.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
That's a good point. I don't know.
No, I think you're right.
I just want to make sure because I don't want somebody coming back with the different opinion.
Helen will take a look at it. I'm going to research it up. But I think Mrs. Grenet's right. I think that.
We have so many opposing opinions. No.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions up here? Anything else that you have, Mrs. Grenet?
No, I think that's all.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Superintendent of Schools, Mr. Lucas, few items for you.
All right.
Get the floor.
Personnel update first. As you are aware, the District Learning Recovery and Acceleration Plan proposed to add 37 additional professional and support staff positions to be funded by federal grant money. After further discussion and consideration, we have eliminated two of the one-year positions at the high school, leaving us with 35 positions to be filled. I'm pleased to report that 28 of the new ESER grant-funded positions have been officially filled with two others currently pending. We hope to conclude with the rest of the positions by the end of next week. We have several more signing on this week. You also have a status breakdown. It's where the district stands with respect to filling various vacant permanent district positions as well for now. Included in the
Could I just, could you hit the pause button real quick?
Sure, go ahead.
Unless I'm missing it, what were the two one-year positions that were left out from the high school?
Two, two one-year specialized positions that we thought we were going to need at the high school for ESER. After meeting with the high school principal and Dr. Henry Shahn, we decided that we did not need that due to the number of students we have that require special education at the high school. Gives us a little bit of a buffer with our ESER spending with the staffing.
Were those TA positions or teaching?
Those were teaching positions, two teaching positions.
That is a luxury, not needing to have support like that.
Yes.
District's that would starve for that.
Yes.
Yeah, I'm just trying to understand why we don't need that support. So, is it because students left that had that or?
That was part of it. But in running another diagnosis of the high school, the number of special ed children and the staffing we have there, Dr. Henry Shahn felt strongly. The high school principal, Mr. Nugent, agreed also that we did not need those two positions at this time. So, that was the discussion we had.
Thank you.
Thank you.
One of the permanent positions was September Forbes for our educator director. And in the means of being transparent, September is our new educator, educator director. She has 38 years of experience in early childhood and school age programs. Unique that September already serves on our school committee as a member. So, we did speak with Mark Terry, our attorney, who directed us to speak with the Ethics Commission. The Ethics Commission Attorney of the Day, Sing Chu, was very helpful. According to Master General Laws, municipal employees can request an exemption for the Board of Selectmen. You can, you can hold two positions in Oxford with Board of Selectmen permission. September filed all the paperwork and the Board of Selectmen granted unanimously by a vote of four to nothing to approve September Forbes exemption on August 3rd. So, she is our new educator director. We're very excited to have her with us.
Could I, could I just jump into?
Absolutely.
Mr. Lucas, I, I just want to tell people that, you know, this is a huge win, I think, for the district with September's experience and just what she brings to our board, well, through the educator piece, what she brings to our board. And she did her due diligence. I mean, she, she crossed every eye, excuse me, crossed every T, dotted every I, worked really hard to, to get to where she got with this. So, congratulations. I, I think it's a win-win for our district. And good job. Great job. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm happy to help.
Thank you for letting me join.
All right. Excellent. And just an update on elementary classroom moves. I met with John Quinn again today. We are all set. The move is 99.9% done. We're down to two boxes left at Barton that have to go to Chafee for one grade two teacher. And otherwise, the move is complete. We have a few teachers who still need some time to set up their room and all the new curriculum we got and all that stuff. But we are in great shape. So, that has gone very, very well. And that's all I have for my report tonight.
Before you go, I do want to take one item that's under us for school committee, kind of bring it up, seeing we're talking about this. I know Corey had brought up about the new staff meet and greet. We do have a discussion point below. So, we might as well bring that up right now. Is there anything you want to elaborate on, Corey, about how that might look? I, I think the intent was to have a little discussion about this tonight to see how we might want to do that. So, if you have, don't mean to put you on the spot.
No, I have experience in this area.
Kind of want to give us a little, you know, overview.
So, how it's going to look like. Yeah. Each year, the principal of each building will come with their new staff members. Principal will come up to give us a quick 30-second bio of, like you just did for September, to say, this is so-and-so, going to be our new English teacher. Here's what he's done. We're excited to have him on. All the principals go through from each building, introduce all their new staff. And then typically, they take like a 10 to 15-minute recess in the meeting. And we'll get up and, and kind of meet them and talk with them and just put a name to a face to say, this is your, your school committee and these are our new employees. So.
Yeah. Thoughts, committee members?
I think it's a great idea.
Yeah, that idea.
Absolutely.
Yeah. I think that's wonderful, especially since there's so many new folks coming.
I'm looking at this list thinking, wow, that's going to be a long night. But typically, typically, it's
There'll be a lot to introduce.
It's three to, three to eight people per building.
Yes.
Obviously, this will be
When is different, when is their orientation? The day that's out on that Monday?
26, 27.
27. So, we could do it at a September meeting.
I say, what we've typically done is waited, let them get started.
Settle in.
That new teacher orientation stuff out of the way, get settled in, have a couple weeks of school and then bring minutes in.
Okay. All right. So, you take it down the line.
Yeah, yeah.
Do we want to pick a date? Do we have it?
Sure.
Because there were so many, I questioned if you wanted to do that for a regular meeting or maybe set up a separate
Yeah, I was going to say.
They're going to do elementary for one meeting and high school, middle for the other meeting?
Yeah.
Break it up into two.
That'll work.
Ms. Forbes?
If I could just say, I think one of the best points that having this meet and greet, if it's at our school committee, is that it will be recorded and parents will also get to put a name to the face if we do that privately. I guess I would like to request that it be videoed for parents so that, as I said, they can have the name-to-face connection as well.
Yeah.
Or maybe even do it over two meetings.
What are the dates on our September meetings?
It's a great suggestion, Mrs. Forbes.
Oh, I can hear you. September 13th and 27th. So, do we want to do elementary on the 13th and middle high school?
Yep.
Miscellaneous? If there's like special?
Well, they all fall in our building. You're going to have some district level people.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, let's do the district level.
So, whatever one has less, whatever one has less.
Middle, middle high school has less.
Okay, that's okay. Perfect. Great idea. All right.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, go ahead.
Or just a point for Mr. Lucas?
Yes.
I had brought this up last year when we started talking about all these ESER-funded positions. And I just want to reiterate that we need to be sure we are clear with these folks, that these are temporary positions.
Correct.
That there's no
Correct.
confusion. And I, and I think it's, we're also clear with the rest of our staff that these are temporary positions. I think we want to make a point of that. So, that there's no, I mean, these are now people with names and faces and
Correct.
A year from now or two years from now, when we're saying goodbye to them, everyone's going to hate the principals and they think are cutting them off, right? So, I just want to make sure that's something that we keep in the
I have a meeting tomorrow with all our administrator team. It's on the list as a reminder.
Yeah.
We've also put it in their contracts. And it's been part, I've met with every single new hire regardless of the position, which is great. Been a great experience. And Helen has noted it also. And the principals have done a good job reminding folks that it is what it is. It's either a one or two-year ESER position.
So, thank you.
All right. Anything else on the meet and greets? Thank you, Mr. Burke. Excellent idea. Glad we got the dates locked in. So, let's go to, we have, do have a warrant. Mrs. Griffin?
So, I have a warrant report for this evening, August 9th, 2021. I have three warrants that were signed, an accounts payable warrant dated August 3rd, 2021 for $57,689.56. A payroll warrant dated August 5th, 2021 for $132,031.77. And an accounts payable warrant for August 10th, 2021 for $62,433.50. And that is all.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Goal-setting meeting. So, at our next regularly scheduled meeting, which will be Monday the 23rd, we are going to be off-site. We will be at, it will be the goal-setting session for the school committee and superintendent. It will not be live streamed. No other business will take place. And we will be at the community center, correct?
Correct.
Still is a public meeting though, right? So, people could attend if they like. So, we are really going to talk about our school committee goals. So, kind of be thinking about that. Something I was also kind of looking at recently, and I've already talked to Mike and Helen a little bit about, is just the school committee protocols. I wasn't sure if we had something in place. So, I kind of created something. But we do have some things. I'd like to talk a little bit about that, that might, again, just kind of how to conduct ourselves and, and what our roles are and that type of stuff. But I think we do a great job with it already. But it's something that we should review as well. So, I'll be thinking about that. I don't know if there's anything you want to add, Mike, about the goals meeting? Anything about that?
No, I think that's great. I might have my first draft of the entry plan for you guys to review that night also.
Oh, great.
So, that will give you an idea of some of the goals you can set for me also and for the group together.
Right.
My one question was, do you, do you want the central office administrative team there? Or do you want building principals there on the 23rd too? Or what were you guys thinking as a group? I'm not sure what you wanted. I envisioned having central office there, but I wasn't sure about the building principals also.
In the past, it has been building principals. And for central office staff, it's been
Justin.
Justin and Helen.
And Mike.
And our specialized director.
And we would have Tower there also this year.
And now we have Tower. We didn't have that position in the past. So, I, you know, I think it does make sense to have everybody. So, everybody's on the same board and nobody's left out, right?
Sure.
Because everybody has, now, is it too early for you to share your potential slogan? I'm putting you on the spot.
Yeah, you gotta wait. You gotta wait. It's too early. It's too early. Yeah, you've got to wait. You've got to wait. It's too early. It's too early.
The slogan's out there.
Business central office, you'll see it.
Yeah, yeah. So I think having everybody involved would be a great thing.
Okay, great. Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
Sorry to put you on the spot there. I got excited.
That's okay.
You know, I would ask, you know, we'll certainly have the meeting, but maybe we can, maybe we can have it like, you know, really, you know, the educational component, right, the nuts and bolts of it. That's going to be our big part. Maybe we have Mr. Ladue. If there's anything budget-wise, we get him in and out. You know, he's going to have a ton going on with buses.
It's a great idea.
And all that stuff. So we really want him lagging around too much if he doesn't have to. You know, obviously, Tara would probably have to be there for the bulk of it. You know, Dr. Sue, you know, you know, maybe piece of it, and if we can release her. I just think, you know, I think for our vision, it's really about, you know, the teaching and learning across the district. Money is important, but if we can get Mr. Ladue in and out, I think, or exempt them altogether, I think that would be.
Tara's planning on sharing our PD plan with you guys that night, too.
Perfect.
For the year, and some of our goals, we have the curriculum instruction, and.
Yeah, I'd say like 90% of our conversation's going to be around that.
Okay, great.
So if we can get him in and out, or if we can just exempt them, I'm fine with that. If the rest of the members are okay with that.
Same time, or do we do it earlier?
Six PM start, correct? Or do we, six PM? Yeah. Okay, where are we at here? Let me not lose sight here. Members for Ms. Cook, anything from you?
No, I'm good, other than.
You also?
Yeah.
All right, thank you, Mrs. Forbes.
So I guess I just wanted to say thank you to the parents who showed up tonight. It is a breath of fresh air when people come in and talk to us, so that we can represent what you want. And you can always send us emails. It's our first initial and last name, except for Mr. Quinocchioli. But you can reach us by phone or through emails. We really want to hear from the people that we represent, so I appreciate you coming. I also wanted to put a shout out to Mike. He went before the selectmen to introduce himself. Same thing that they said, nice to put a name to a face. So he explained where he came from. They asked some questions, and it was really great. So.
Glad to get a chance to do that.
Yes, me too. And I'm happy to be on board.
Thank you, Mrs. Forbes. Mrs. Griffin?
So I know I made this request before. I'm going to say it again. Just, it's more for a reminder of myself mentally, but to hear what's planned for our PD, for our teachers that are new hires.
Yep.
Kind of get a sense of what the mentor program might be. I know you, you know, Tara might have some new vision.
Yes.
And that maybe I just made a false assumption that she'd be heading that up.
She is.
Okay.
You are correct. We're going to give you an update on that, too.
Yeah, yeah. So I know that's in the works, but I'm just going to say it again, again, to mentally remind myself. And then to hear, you know, now that we're kind of got that wonderful news from you, Justin, that we've got some money here, that we have to think thoughtfully about how to spend, so we do our best to meet those requirements of side grant. It sounds like we have an opportunity to create some programming that is very much needed, not surplant things, but like supplement. We got to do this because we have kids with long-term COVID potentially, God forbid, or mental health, or transitioning back into the district. And again, I have something in mind that I witnessed you do, so I'm kind of, I'd love to see that here. That's all.
You got it.
So thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Griffin. Mr. Burke?
Yeah, I just want to echo what Mrs. Forbes said about thanking folks for coming out tonight. I wish more people would do it. And I think, as we spoke to a few times tonight, there are more opportunities. There's Board of Health meetings, there's other school committee meetings. There's a chance to have your voice heard. I think this is an important time to do that. I just ask that, we know we have very smart, very passionate people on both sides, that we try to do that respectfully, and I think tonight was a great example of that. I think everyone did a great job. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Burke. Yeah, I did try to look real quick on the Board of Health calendar. They have had meetings the last two Mondays, so August 2nd, and tonight at 5:00. I don't know if that's a pattern. They don't have.
It's the first Monday of the month.
Oh, is it? So they had one today, too, so I don't know if they'll have one next week, but to Mr. Burke's point, certainly research it, or you could certainly email the central office or call, and they can find that information out for you. Thank you to the parents, again, for coming out. And great discussion. And I can just tell you again that we, as a board, will do what's in the best interest of kids. That's our mission. I know the superintendent's mission, and that's kind of the decision we're going to make. So hang in there. I know this has been a long journey, and we all felt like it was kind of at the end. Still think we're close to the end. We just got a, we just taking a little detour right now. Hopefully, we can get back to the end of the road. So thank you all for that. And at this point, oh, yes, Mrs. Griffin, go ahead.
I noticed one more thing in our packet about the special meeting coming up for Wednesday, October 6. And I don't know if I just missed this or not. So there's something here about warrants, and I kind of, it might be through you to Mr. Ladue, if there's any thoughts of anything as far as warrants getting put in for, I don't know if this is for the next year, calendar year. It looks like that fiscal year, one, two, and three. So this kind of seems, it looks like part of our projection for long-term projects. Correct me if I'm wrong, and maybe some of our capital. And so should that be on our next meeting agenda that we discuss this?
Good catch. Just quickly, I believe this is for the submission of, excuse me, this is for the submission of articles for the upcoming town meeting.
Right.
So I believe there is a deadline for it. So if you folks want to submit any articles for the upcoming town meeting on October 6, that's.
I think we do have.
That closes September 8.
Yeah. So I do, I mean, correct me if I'm wrong. I don't want to put words in your mouth, but would this be for capital improvement?
No.
No? Okay. So this would be like, I mean, we don't need money right now. Thanks, Peter God. I didn't think I'd ever say that in my life on this board. That's such a nice thing to say. So what type of things would necessarily?
For example, at the most recent town meeting, we needed approval to seek foster reimbursement for transportation, reimbursement for the foster transportation. And that was one thing we needed town meeting approval. So I mean, no, that's a little abstract, but that's the type of thing that we would go.
That's a great point.
Put on as an article.
Did we, we already got that approved, though, at the last meeting?
That was approved, yes. So on the upcoming end of year report, I will submit that, and then seek the reimbursement. And then we can use that to offset our future foster transportation.
And then I get another crazy question. I know in the past, we've had a sped revolving fund, I think it's still in existence, where we have been able to put aside some money, like kind of a rainy day, God forbid, kids come into our district that need services, so we were able to provide it. And we had to have a warrant, I believe, in place for that. Is that something that we could resurrect if it kind of went away?
So that's another great example of a article that you would bring forward at the town meeting, was to appropriate some additional monies, whatever the committee would like.
I think in the past, we did like $250,000, and it was talked about being matched by the state.
At this point, there's $100,000, and it's a special education reserve fund.
Right.
So if you want to access that, you would need approval from the Board of Selectmen, and I believe yourselves. And of course, that's for rainy day, if, you know, if you really were in a pinch.
So should we do something like that? Should we have another reserve fund if we do feel like we have a substantial, you know, windfall of some money? I don't know if that's really what's going to happen or not, but if it is, could we have one for repairs or something? Is this stuff that we should be thinking about, like we have a special fund that we're setting aside for, God forbid, something? I know the town has stuff that they kind of help us with.
Correct. So there is a building improvement fund.
Right.
However, a lot of times, that's done in the May, at the Maytown meeting.
Okay.
Money is appropriated to that for building repairs, because it kind of goes hand-in-hand with the capital plan.
Right. It's hard to foresee what the year's going to be in the fall.
Yeah, we wouldn't know where we financially stand in October, so that's more of a May thing. So, but it's just something to think about. The submission for articles is now open.
Right. In October, we might find out, we might need to do something with money. Yeah, that's a good point.
That I do have, just a quick one before you go. Wednesday, October 6, here in our gym, do we make sure, I know volleyball, I believe, is a fall sport, no conflict with the game, or just make sure that we're.
At this point in time, it is undecided whether it's going to be held in the gymnasium or the auditorium.
Okay.
I would prefer the auditorium, as I had made the decision to move forward on refinishing the lovely floor in there, assuming that we wouldn't have town meeting in there. So yeah, it hasn't been decided yet. I guess it really depends, it's contingent upon what's happening with COVID.
All right. Good enough. Thank you. There was one other thing in our packet. I can just announce that we are doing building tours. The subcommittee that Molly and I are on, we are touring the buildings this Wednesday. And so that is what you saw in your packet as well.
We're going, so.
Just that everybody was invited.
Okay, we're all invited. Okay, so is it posted?
No deliberation, no talking to anybody. Sorry. No talking to you guys. All right.
All right, so that's that. Now, I think, anything else from the board before I do executive session properly this time, to get the vote? Nothing else? Okay. All right, so at this point, we are going to go into executive session per MGL Chapter 30A, subsection 21A 3, to discuss strategy with respect to litigation in connection with an ongoing legal labor matter involving a former employee. As an open meeting, may have a detrimental effect on the litigating position of the committee. The committee will adjourn from executive session and not return to open session. We do need a motion to go into executive session.
Make that motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing and hearing on call of the board, Ms. Cook?
Yes.